You're gonna get your 50% of the tuition. I said you're gonna get your 50% of the tuition. That's definitely sad, yeah.
Six thirty, Neil Houghton, the president of the board supervisors and calling this meeting to order. We start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you all for coming out on what was a rainy evening that hopefully has cleared now. Just a couple of announcements. We have two supervisor seats up for election. We have two incumbents running. Supervisor Branson here nearest me and middle supervisor Brooks. Our incumbents, supervisor, former supervisor Camp on the far side, was a supervisor a few years ago. So you may know all three faces, but only two will be elected in November. That's why we wanted to have a meeting so you'd have a chance to meet them, hear their point of view. We actually have five supervisors on the board in addition to the two incumbents. We have the meeting concerning the president. And back in the room, we have Mike Gilpin, who is the vice president from Stanley. So all five supervisors are here tonight. And I have some questions for these gentlemen. This is an official meeting. It's being recorded and broadcast live via Zoom. If you're viewing this meeting on Zoom, you will not be able to submit questions to the public Q and A. Within the meeting notes, you will find the email address for the candidates where you can submit questions that you may have to them. I think that's all the comments I have. If you have a cell phone, please silence it. The lights are going off in the middle of the question or answer. We're going to be fairly casual. We're hoping to keep answers to the three-minute range. Probably two months, I guess. But I don't think we're gonna have a problem. These guys are pretty correct on all their answers, I think. And I think it should be a good evening. So Tanya, who is our general manager of the district, will be doing the moderating tonight. I'll kind of sit on the sidelines. I don't expect to be very active unless you...
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and open the floor to the candidates' statements, starting with Supervisor Branson.
Good evening. In the event that I'm successful in restoring my reelection, I have priorities. They are around infrastructure, which we've all heard about. The order of my priorities is essentially those and drainage, which we all recognize are keys to the long-term viability of Sunland. The second priority is our utility water and sewer system. Maintain the integrity of that. Assure ourselves that on a position where we can grow those facilities as needed in light of the new activities that we've been enjoying and hopefully will continue to. So if we are successful at marketing twelve and continuing the growth, we gotta be able to accommodate those people from the executive perspective. So that's a big priority. My third priority, this can be somewhat unpopular, but is amenities. In spite of how some people think about particular amenities here, we have to be cognizant of the fact that people are not gonna come here and pay someone their dollar here or live here so they can fish and eat and sleep. There has to be something you drop them, something they enjoy, something they wanna be part of. So our cold facility and our racquet club, our example golf course, the golf courses, all of those things are very, very important and very much the engines that run Sunland. My intent going forward would be to become much more involved than I have been in the capital procurement process. If I'm on my hands, I wanna meet with members and I want to participate in evaluations of capital spending. And I wanna control capital spending to the tightest degree that we can in order to make sure that we have adequate reserves and are able to deal with any other financial emergency.
Thank you for coming. My name is Ray Brooks. I am resident for reelection. My wife Dan and I have been residents of Sunland since 2011. I was appointed to the board in fall of 2017, and I've also served on a golf committee for the last four years. Some of my accomplishments, the first three years that I've been on the board, I'd just like to review quickly. Golf membership rates, when I first got on the board, as any of you who are golfers know, we have different levels of memberships. And when you look at those levels of memberships, initially, they made no sense. There was no rhyme or reason as to why we could charge one group one price, one group another price. So what we did was, I instituted or recommended to the board that we put a percentage application to all of the memberships, whether the full family and full single. And the board agreed that was a fact. And so now what happens, if you do decide to take a price increase, it could be a percentage increase across the board for all categories. Also, I noticed when I first got involved that Casper was reporting financials for the restaurant and the golf question of the business as one. So you really couldn't tell what one was doing without looking at the total. Just very difficult to do. So I challenged, at the time, Ron Wondling, who was regional, and said, "You guys have gotta split it up so we can see exactly what's going on." October, two years ago, was the first month that they started reporting the numbers correctly. So now we see revenues and expenses for the golf course. Separately, we see revenues and expenses for the restaurant. And as most of you know, that has opened up a whole can of worms and a lot of conversation. But it certainly was something that needed to be done. I definitely believe in working with a balanced budget. I can be honest with you. I think I've seen three budgets. The first two I did not vote for. I thought we were spending way, our spending was way out of line compared to what our revenues were. And I couldn't support the budget. I will tell you, this year I did support the budget because we passed a balanced budget. In fact, this year we had a surplus of $100,000. I'm talking about the budget for 2020, 2021. As a precaution, though, I also recommended to the board, which they agreed to, to allocate some of the capital monies, or take some of the capital monies and put them aside, hold them until January. Because as you all know, we're dealing with an epidemic. As you all know, we're not sure what's gonna happen with our friends up north, whether we're gonna be able to come down here. So I said we should hold some money. What went through all the capital a couple of weeks ago, and I believe the number was somewhere around $500,000 that we were holding, we kind of froze it until January. If situations presented that we can spend it without hurting ourselves, we'll certainly do that. Rosin drainage, again, in my early tenure on the board, I noticed that we had a, we had some capital donated towards rosin drainage. We had some regular accounts or expense accounts donated to it. And it was just all over the place. The numbers were not consistent, the numbers were not sufficient. So in here, I recommended to the board, and we agreed to do this, that we would take the older money out of the capital, put it into the regular expense accounts, and properly fund it. I'm happy to say, the last two years and then this year coming up, we've allocated $500,000 for those improvements. And I would expect that we will continue to do that. Recreational facilities, I attended a workaround of shuffleboard courts. I don't know if you all have seen them. This was kind of something I took, I took over or took responsibility on very beginning. Originally, we were gonna put two courts up. Probably was not gonna end up being sufficient if indeed people here accepted it. So we went to Tanglewood and we checked out a couple of other places. And we had developed what I consider to be a first-class shuffleboard facility here by the tennis courts. If you haven't seen it, certainly we recommend it to see it. It's certainly something that you should be very proud of. Landowner seats and popular seats. This was a big issue earlier this spring. As you know, there's five supervisors, there's three popular seats, and there's two landowner seats. We were concerned, the boys in general was concerned over the landowner seats, the way the voting was, it was $1 one unit, which weighed heavily towards Tanglewood and heavily towards the hospital, the hospital chose to get involved in voting. So the boy was at a dilemma of what to do. At first, we decided that we would possibly go to five popular seats. And we did vote on that, and I voted for it. After we voted for that, I've got numerous people coming up to me complaining, saying, "You're taking away my vote. I don't know how you can do that. I'm a resident, maybe not here I'm a resident, but I'm a resident, and I wanna vote." So I went back to the board and I said, "Let's try this." And I said, "Maybe we can do one parcel, one vote." And a lot of people said, "Well, I don't know." The boy, we've had conversations, the boy went with it, everybody was happy with it. And I'd say he went to the county and they voted 5-0 in favor. So now everybody who is a resident, or I should say an owner of property in Sunland, gets some sort of a vote. Not necessarily with all the votes, but they're certainly entitled to a vote. And with that...
Mr. Brooks, thank you.
I look forward to any questions.
Tough act to follow here. A couple of tough acts to follow. I have to take a little bit of a different approach in that I know there's people on Zoom or Facebook that might not know me. I know most people are here and they know me. But for the benefit of those people that are viewing or streaming, I would like to do some background hunting. My name is Mark Camp. I'd like to thank the district here for pulling this meeting together. I think it's a great forum, I think it's a good way to introduce some candidates. I've been a homeowner in Sunland for 10 years. And some of my background, I'm a graduate of Southern New Hampshire University as well as Boston University with a degree in information technology that was paid for by an employer that actually paid for my education. So I was greatly appreciative of that. Some other facts about my personal is that I've been married to my wife Linda, who's out there somewhere. And I did say Linda. 51 years, she's loved my life. We have two children, one up north and one over in the Tampa Bay area. And we have two wonderful grandchildren. We're very proud of them. I have a little over 30-plus years in managements at different levels, including senior management levels, working with corporations such as Hummingwell, Ava Technology, HB. And I finished my career working for Fidelity Investments, I traded for. And some other things in between, right? It's fortunate to take a early retirement at one point. I'm a member or served in service, short stint, but I was there. I've served on a lot of boards over my years. And I think it's important that I bring up this board as Neil Houghton said, or President Houghton said, "I am a past member of the board. I was a supervisor, I was also a president. I also won a four-year extended election or the next election." Unfortunately, prior to even starting that time for my election, I had to resign. It was personal in nature. We're all getting older, certain things happen in life. I have no control over that. And I can let you know right now, as I sit here, and I hope this isn't a defining point for anybody out there, but my wife, my children, my family is number one over everything. So hopefully nothing will get in my way so that I can carry on what I wanted to do those other four years. From there, I want to also make note that some people may not be aware that supervisors do step down. It's an interesting factoid, as someone would say. And in the past seven years, we've had six supervisors step down for various reasons. Someone else, some of them personally. So these things happen, as I say, when we get older. I've been involved in many, many outside activities, I will employ with those. But what I would like to talk about, and Mr. Branson, actually Ray also, the infrastructure here needs to have a plan. We have a water and sewer, I don't wanna say a problem, but we have 40-plus years of piping. We've encountered some problems with that, and we need to put a plan together for the future. We own and purchased this past year, I believe it was, maybe it was a little more than a year ago, what they call Unit 12. It's 12 or 1,500 units, if I stand, if I'm correct. And I think it's important to know that if we don't have a plan in place, somebody comes in, the good news would be if somebody came in, we would have to be able to support that drainage, water, sewage, and so on. I'm gonna digress and say one of the things that I would like to see, and many people spoke to me in the past, is a beautification program. If you drive down Sunland Boulevard, let's say you're looking for property, one of the Southern Holmes properties, one of the, you know, other properties that would be built by several builders in here, it looks very nice. It looks appealing. When people come into the community, they see that and they like it, there's flags out. It looks like a nice community. The downside is, they happen to come in on the north side, and there's a big sign out there, there is nothing that directs them even towards the city hall. There's nothing that directs them towards this place. So I would like to see a beautification plan put into place. There are places in this community that really need to be, let's say, polished up a little bit. Policies and procedures. I was involved, when I was involved on the board, a lot went around on policies and procedures. And I'm stickler about policies and procedures. I figure if you have a policy, then you need to enforce that policy. And I understand there are situations where, so we need to reexamine some of our policies and procedures. I was instrumental in putting my policy through or with the board, but I instrumentally started it for the golf operation here. And I understand, something you correct in the board, that that might be going through revision in the near future. I hold it to take into consideration where the violations are and why we're not handling them. I look a little more towards the community and the people out here. I wish this, this was the regular meeting that we have at the board with all of these people. Instead, we get to a grid. I think there's a way of bridging that gap between the community and the board of supervisors. Now, I know, and every one of the supervisors will admit to this, I'm sure, people come up to us, come up on the floor, people came up to me way back, and they said, "My voice doesn't count. I come up, I just suggest these balls on deaf ears." We need to get rid of that, we need to bring it together. As far as cost overruns, I'm a little concerned about that. When I was on the board, this place we're in, and I'm not against the resident, by the way, I think it was a great approach for many. It started out as a pretty expensive project. When I was on the board, we tried to cap it at $650,000. I won't talk about the supervisors that were with me, and it kept on going up around $900,000 in the budget. They said, "No, we're talking about $650,000." He said, "Never go over $650,000." Yes, right. A million three later, and we're here. So I consider that a cost overrun. I'm almost done? Okay. Sorry, just got more seconds. Obviously, you talked about recreation. I think that's an important part here, as well as, I do have one other part, and I'll... I believe that the district should have the ability to make decisions. And I'll explain that later after my closing statement. Because we're paying them to do things. We don't need to micromanage them. And I see that happening a lot from the board. The board needs to know what's going on. But you don't need to have $4,000 or $5,000 expenditures coming back three and four times for approval. Thank you very much, I appreciate all the time.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start out with my first question to Mr. Branson. If you received a million-dollar grant to use for the district any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
I might not say the question before. The first thing I would do would be to contract with a professional grant-writing service who would devote their time and energy to Sunland and not just have a grant, see what's available. Because I see, I see grant money for new sewer systems on a, that's very light. We've received grant money here for the shuttle court courts. I think we received grant money for the pool that was built. But I see, I don't know a lot of that. So I would take, I would pay $450,000 of that money and contract with a professional service who would devote their time and effort to helping us procure more public money. Take that million dollars and tie it into a million, five or a few million. In terms of the priority, I don't see something that I couldn't wait to spend it on. I'm not a waiver on spending it because it's there. So I would start the priority based on projects based on what grant money might be available. And I would pursue any improvements that were available and have potential.
Thank you, Mr. Branson. Mr. Brooks?
I've had legal headache today, I wouldn't spend any on the hospital. If I had legal, I think specifically Joe mentioned this before, I'd be more... It's critically important that we build up our inventory. You see, we need, outside of the golf course, we need to really have a first-class operation as far as what we offer if we wanna grow the community to the extent that we think we wanna grow it. I look at the swimming pool that we have, I look at the weight room that we have, I look at the playground that we have, this community center over there. I just think there's lots of room for improvement. I'm gonna assume I can take care of the roads and the sewers and all that with our own money without having to get extra money on that. That's a yearly project, it'll probably take 10, 15 years. But this is the type of project that you would look for additional funding or grants on to get accomplished. So I would probably, I think we're actually doing it right now. I know we sent down a survey to all the folks on how you feel about the amenities here. Depending on how that comes back, if everybody's all in agreement, I would certainly wanna support that. And if I had a million, I'd put it towards that, in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Cam?
A million dollars, okay. I kind of echo some of the same things that Ray and Joe said. But I guess I would look at a marketing plan. And I know we've had a lot of them. And when I say a marketing plan, I mean a full functional marketing plan. We have so many that, we need to promote Sunland. The more people get in at Sunland, the bigger the population, the greater the revenues from assessments and so on. But we need to do it in a manner or fashion where we don't do a $250,000 or $200,000 study and then not have a plan behind it. So I would believe in a marketing plan behind that. That might be bringing in staff, a professional, let's say, salesperson. So if they lead one out, there was a follow-up process to that, and they could then start to come into this community, hopefully by. We've tried pieces of that in the past. Sometimes it's worked a little bit. But unfortunately, we don't have the staff, and we don't have the follow-up for it. So it falls on deaf ears. If you, if you get a lead in and nobody sees it or calls back, then what good is that to you? By, once again, bringing in those people into this community, there'll be a significant increase hopefully in revenue through assessments, through water, and through maybe even golf. The golf memberships might go up, you know, in terms of growth. So that would be probably a big piece of it. I know it's a lot of money, but it takes a lot of money to make it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Cam. I have a question for each of you, so I'll start with Mr. Brooks. We have a concern about district-owned land that is behind our home. When we purchased our home, we were told that the area would be maintained on a regular basis. This does or has not been happening. How would you handle or how would you address this?
We have a concern about district-owned land that is behind our home.
We, we had a, we had a meeting a couple of days ago, and we think we've worked it out to who will be responsible. Will either be the responsibility of micro land, these people in the golf course, or the split up? I don't remember exactly how to split up. If I remember correctly, I think we've accounted for everything. So if you're not getting regular attention, which you shouldn't be done, you have to forget about the rain, and it rains every other day. Certainly things are not gonna go at the rate that everybody would like to see it, even though the growth of the stuff is gonna continue to get higher and higher. But assuming all things are normal, I would expect that you should get your area cleared at least once a week, perhaps once every two weeks. If you're not, then you call. And I'll make sure I'm staying careful.
Mr. Cam, did you want me to repeat the question again?
Yes, please.
We have a concern about district-owned land that is behind our home. When we purchased our home, we were told that the area would be maintained on a regular basis. This does or has not been happening. This has not been happening. How would you address this?
Well, I would hope that if it wasn't happening, they would call their supervisors and see if he or she could get involved. But since there is, I believe, and I'm not on the board now, but there is a plan in place to do that. So if it's not being done, then, I hate to say it, we have to go to that department and say, "So-and-so is having a problem getting their property clear," or I should say, "Maintained." I mean, if I had a problem with that, the first thing I'd be doing is going down to the district and saying, "What's going on here?" Now, if the district isn't responding, if that's their real question, if they're not responding to their request to have it maintained, then I think that's a totally ridiculous problem we have to deal with.
Thank you, Mr. Cam. Mr. Branson?
My first question would be, have we told by who? We all know the realtor's kind of like level is for us. We've seen that. If the district, maybe through micro, through the golf operation, and within that, they definitely should be following up with us. And we would be following up the project to make sure that different things happen. Overall, I think the problem areas, and I kind of were, cleaned up pretty well over the last year. I think that's been through the toy effort of Mr. employee's advice on the golf course here.
Thank you, Mr. Branson. Moving on to the next question, this will be a question for each of you, starting with Mr. Cam. Is there a code of conduct for someone removing signs for private property?
Wow, that's a very interesting question. I'm actually, wonderful prompt that question. Things have made you go, "I don't have enough time to really ask that fully." What, and I don't know who submitted the question, but what I might suggest, and I'd be more than happy to work with you and even get together with you offline, that possibly you should look at Article 7, Section 12 of the ordinances that were incorporated here. and approved by Hans County. And we are governed by some of those. Now, it gives you some of the answers. You know, we'll put that question out here. It will give you some of the answers. If it doesn't give you all of the answers, you can have my email address. They have it here. Send me an email. I would be more pleased to sit down with you at your convenience of mind if something is mutually agreeable to have a discuss this further. Thank you very much.
Mr. Branson?
I don't know why. Anyway, the touchy sign that wasn't on their property, I'm not picking up on it, but granted, the sign may have been in an inappropriate place. Enforcement is not up to the citizens, but the board, it's up to the security folks and the, and the community government. So I don't think a sign anywhere should be touched by anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
I understand that the district policy is only the district to remove signs. Nobody else has the authority to remove those signs, any signs. So if somebody has a problem with a sign, they had to call the district and say, you know, whatever their reason is, I don't think this sign is right. It shouldn't be there, what have you. But nobody has permission from the district to still let it take the sign. I believe that's the policy that we have, and it's been stated in our board's board.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Moving on to the next question for each of you. I'll start with Mr. Branson. Why is there no charge for a second golf cart?
That's an interesting question. It's like, well, it's gas per season, which I support. I think gas per should be a place to make those problems. The club actually benefits in that the clubs' balance fleet is not being utilized. My rhythm and attitude is really providing tracks, proving the truth, and saving one of their own equipment. I don't see why that's not a good decision.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Two parts, two personal parts.
Two parts for what?
Two.
I don't know. I've never been asked that question. I, it's, it's a valid point. I guess if you have two personal parts, they probably shouldn't be in charge for the second carts. I don't think it would be appropriate to charge the full price. I think you should give them, give a discount to it. But quite frankly, that's something that we have to have more conversation on. I'm not even sure how many cases it's, but I don't know how many. To my knowledge, there are not a lot of people that have two carts in Sun and Lake. So I think we're talking about a few, not the majority.
Thank you. Mr. Cam?
Can I ask you, did they say why they will not be in charge of the second cart?
Why no charge for the second golf cart?
As a member, and I'm now privileged of all of the deals that go on, I, I go and I get my membership, and I can't answer what that reasoning is. It would require a lot of discussion as to why they don't charge it, but I'm not going to speculate why they don't. It's not appropriate at this time. You, you need to have the conversation with golf management.
Thank you, Mr. Cam. Next question will be for each of you. I'll start with Mr. Brooks. The 10% gas tax is not shared with Sun and Lake. Money is sent to Avon Park Sebring and not Sun and Lake. Why? Because we are a special district, and that seems unfair and not a municipality. I apologize. That's not really a question, but it...
I agree. If you're asking why we are not reaping any monies from this particular gas act, it is because we are a special district. I can tell you that we had conversations at the last couple of board meetings on this, and that our lawyer is doing some further investigation into it. And quite frankly, if it was up to me, I think we'll give it a shot with the county and see what the county has to say. But at this point, we're, we're not eligible for it. I don't know if that answers the question or not.
Thank you, Mr. Cam.
The, the only knowledge I have of this, since I wasn't privileged in any board meetings where, or I should say, the one-on-one meetings you have, is that we aren't getting our fair share of the tax money. But what I do know is, for the gas act, what I do know is, at the last two meetings, this has been a discussion, and at the last meeting, I believe, Time upset, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, you were looking into this to find out, and until you get further information, you don't have an answer yet. I guess that David might be working on it. But I believe that's what you said at the last meeting. I'm not going to keep on.
At the last meeting, we did mention that we, we as a special district do not qualify for revenues from the Department of Revenue as it for gas tax. But David is working on some amendment to provide to the Board of Supervisors, yes?
Yes, that's what I thought. So, you know, until that happens, I mean, I don't know that anybody at this, this these three tables can answer why it's, just being investigated.
Mr. Branson?
Correct me if I'm wrong, David, but my understanding is that's not a county regulation. It's a state regulation?
Correct. The state, the state figures up those funds, and you don't have a way to directly access them by getting the files open.
I mean, so that, I'm being told by a couple of the real owners here that we have one-time reach of compromise with the county, and they were only asphalt builders, which we received three years of free asphalt. And it was a, sort of thing, since they couldn't help us either way. I don't know if the county still owns an asphalt facility or not. Anybody know that?
Thank you.
I'd say do, that might be something that would be worth discussing with our, I mean, we're not a new county commissioner representing us. So it's might be a conversation we want to start with him. Immediately if this was done before, maybe it could be done again. And that would actually never be a plan to abandon.
Thank you, Mr. Branson. Moving on to the next question. This is from Mark Cam. What are the reasons you resigned your position last year, and why should we vote for you?
That's a valid question. I think I addressed it at the very beginning, but we'll have to go over that again. Things happen in our lives. They're personal. Not for the public. They're personal. And I don't have to share with anybody. But I did say that my family is number one in my life, and that's my priority. I step down because they are more important. I hate to say it, but I don't want people to think. I don't care about you, but I do care about you. But when given the option here or there, you have to go where number one is. Number one is my family. I felt badly that I couldn't take a second turn in four years and fulfill some of the things that I wanted to do at that time. Like I said, I'm here. Things that help me, or things are good. Again, I'm blessed. And I feel that I can pick up where I honestly left off and carry forward, give what the people want here instead of some of the special interest groups. Quite frankly, it's going to the special interest groups, and I can do what I think is appropriate to this community.
Thank you, Mr. Cam. Moving on to the next question. This is for each of you. We'll start with Mr. Branson. When will the board focus more on a better future for Sun and Lake and stop micromanaging?
I'm sorry, say again?
When will the board focus more on a better future for Sun and Lake and stop micromanaging?
That's a good question. There are people who are inherently micromanagers. I never felt like I was one of those. I do think that we need to redefine the relationship between staff and the board. I think there's a lot of things that happen at staff level in the vacuum, and we find out after everything's said and done what was decided. I had an issue with that. But in terms of micromanaging, we tell them micromany, we're a model, or we tell anybody else how to do their job. I, I've never actively participated in that, I don't intend to.
Thank you, Mr. Branson. Mr. Brooks?
Micromanage, huh? I think the reason that we come across as micromanaging, just so you all know, is because we can't speak to each other other than at a board meeting. So I have no clue what any of my peers are thinking pertaining to anything that we're discussing on this report. So are there, does it seem like we're asking a lot of questions, and sometimes it seems like we're wasting our time? Perhaps someone will spend your money, your money. I think we have to know each of us thinking before we make that decision. So if you call that micromanaging, then I apologize, but in my opinion, do we overdo it? Perhaps. But it's very important. As far as looking at the bigger picture, there's no question we've got to eventually come up with a solution on growing, or what's the word? But I got a bunch of good words, but, uh, coming up with a, a plan to expand Sun and Lake. Uh, we've, we've done a couple about promotional plans or planning, I can't think of the word.
Marketing.
Marketing, I'm saying. And I was a marketer, and I was a marketer. We've done some marketing plans in the past, and I can tell you, uh, we spent a hundred thousand dollars or so of your money, and kind of throwing it right down the drain. So we don't know how to do it, to be honest with you, yet. We've had a lot of people tell us how to do it. But we haven't been able to figure it out. That's a challenge. That's something that we have to come up with. That's critically important. I think that was...
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Cam?
See, and I had talked about taking that million dollars, the points, and that money, to a, the same kind of plant. So we're a little bit over the limit here. Now, as far as micromanaging, back to your original question, I also kind of brought that up on some of my opening statements. I think we, I think there is a form of micromanaging going on. If I, and David, you can correct me if I'm wrong, from my old days of sunshine and all of that, but first of all, no board member can direct anybody to do anything, okay? And one of the things that I see in micromanaging, and I see it a lot as I attend meetings myself, and I'll give you an example right now. Several months back, somebody came in there. We had an issue with speed, speed bumps, things of that nature. So they came up, and you've seen them all around the community here, where they have calming devices to speed bumps. So I think they're around $1,300 a piece. They're somewhat hoary. Okay? They came up with, oh, I would say a procedure to get X amount of names, I think it's 20. And if they brought that to the board, then the board would say yay or nay. And then the board would say, but you have to do this study, and this study, and this study. I think it was almost three months, several meetings, before a decision was made for an expenditure of $1,400. I witnessed it again this week. People came in. They had their 20 signatures or whatever. Time's organization decided, I think it was with Mike Early and company, they said, after viewing the area, they didn't think it was appropriate to put a speed bump. They measured it up. They said, I don't know, it's 280 feet, it's on a curve, it's this and it's that. They came up with what I believe were all legitimate reasons for not putting a speed bump in, in there. But Mike took it a step further, I believe it was Mike, that said, I'll tell you what. We'll get some more statistics on this, and I'm going to put that speed machine that we bought that talks about your speed when you're driving on the street, you go 25 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour, and it records all of this, and it reports traffic. It was a great tool, and it was an expensive tool. I think when Mike comes back and says, well, Tanya, or whomever she's speaking with, this is what the data says. And they should be able to make that decision at that point and not have to come back to the board for $1,400 and have two or three more meetings discussing this reaction.
Thank you, Mr. Cam. All right, moving on to the next question. This is for Supervisor Brooks. One of your pet projects was the new shuttle board courts. Will we be, will we be getting the money to offset the cost from the county as promised, or will the county find some reason to remit as usual?
This, this is my first dealing with the county.
I don't want to be interrupted. We cannot see your participants from this. Thank you.
Can you put it back here so I can hide it? It's, this is my first dealing with the county, and it's our trying to secure funds. I think we did it through, it was our PAC money. To my knowledge, we were going to get 50% of the cost of the project. They were agreed to it. And I have not heard anything that says it's not going to happen. If we've had a bad experience in the past with the county, I am not aware of it. So I can't really comment. And I can tell you that this project was 50% funded.
Has that ever happened where they didn't fail, Brian? Does the county ever remit?
No, sir.
Just curious for that question to come from.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Moving on to the next question. This will be for each of you. I will start with Mr. Cam. What is the single most important problem facing Sun and Lake that must be resolved for Sun and Lake to survive as we know it? Please keep the comments available because we are recording live. Thank you.
That's interesting. Here's, it's a catch-22, I think. We need to grow, but, because the only place we get revenue is from assessments and from water primarily. So if we don't grow, and our budget currently, or is roughly around $12 million annually, we'll be unable to survive. If we have a catastrophic failure where, and I say catastrophic failure, where we lose our, let's say, piping, $300,000, although it was only $300,000, but we had this $50,000 project, or $75,000 project. If we have many of those, I think that could affect us because I'm not sure that we right now have the ability to float loans. I know that we finally finished things, I think it's the fifth third, is that, is that correct, fifth third? Yes, no?
We have, we have names through the fifth third. Where they, we financed that as, it was a bond issue for infrastructure.
But it's coming off the books, correct?
Actually, it was, I'm, I'm sorry.
Is it coming off the books?
At the last meeting, it was phase five that we talked about, which, which that is, that was the actual bond issue for, you know, the structure that we built in the areas of Deer Run and, and some of the other areas in Site Center.
So I guess when they do our audit, is that going to be, is that lien still going to be on our books?
The fifth third lien will no longer be on the books as a liability. It'll just be mentioned in the notes to the financial statements.
So that, that's real advantage, because now we would be able to secure a loan if something catastrophic happened. And I know it didn't instantly your question about the catastrophic failure. But, you know, I, I think that, you know, we could be in, in tough shape.
Thank you, Mr. Cam. Mr. Branson, what is the single most important problem facing Sun and Lake that must be resolved for Sun and Lake to survive as we know it?
My response to that goes back to capital. We have a massive investment. We got the equipment out of the maintenance building. Here's my equipment. It's underutilized and underutilized. Someone intended to become very involved in any equipment replacement, requesting it to plug in. Do you determine whether owing versus renting makes sense? Do you determine whether spending capital and, and not getting a return on it makes sense? And I also want going forward at sharing of resources. I understand that I don't have specifics. But we have equipment in the maintenance building that belongs to the district. And the golf course is not, that's that same equipment, because they're not allowed to use it. I don't know if that's sacrificial, but I'm told. Those are the kinds of things that I intend to involve in. And to make sure that if we put capital into equipment, it's... put capital into equipment, it's a way that we can justify owing.
Thank you, Mr. Branson. Mr. Brooks, did you want to repeat the question?
No. My answer is, we need to grow Sun and Lake, we need to get more residents.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. I have two more questions. This one is for Supervisor Branson. The latest clubhouse restaurant renovation costing close to two million dollars, all things considered, has not been very popular with the residents. You spearheaded this renovation process. Do you feel good about your judgment, or do you feel it was a mistake, as many do?
Well, he qualifies, I don't know, front end. I have concerns for the kitchen, the safety and the sanitation in the kitchen. Both of which were on the edge of, we could be shut down by a state at any point in time. We knew we were doing that illegally. So my initial intent was to expand the kitchen, provide the ability to do sanitation properly, and to provide a safe working environment. Granted, we've been lucky, we've done that anyways, but I can tell you that in the common states of the union, oh, she will shut that down because of the way we work. In terms of the money, it went from a kitchen expansion to expansion of the dining area and to the line. My keeper and number, that's first two million dollar number I've ever, I've already talked about three times. My initial proposal was to spend six hundred or six hundred fifty thousand dollars in our kitchen.
Thank you, Mr. Branson. I was just a question for Mr. Branson. Okay, this is the very last question, it'll be for each of you. Mr. Brooks. Are the HOA rules, homeowners association rules, applicable to all areas of Sun and Lake? Seems like there are some houses that are not visible in Sun and Lake that can do whatever they want.
This is for me?
This is for each of you. Are the HOA rules applicable to all areas of Sun and Lake?
Somebody has to help me, it's my understanding that if you live in, like Manor Hill or another area within Sun Lake that has its own association, those rules will override the district's rules, okay? That's how I think I understand it, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry?
If those rules are more restrictive than the district's, then yes, they override it. They cannot be less restrictive than the district.
Is it possible that there was something going on within specific area within Sun Lake that does not match up with our HOA rules? It's very possible. To really tell you if it's correct or not, I think we'd have to get a little bit more into specifics and see exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Camp?
Please repeat the question.
Are the HOA rules applicable to all areas of Sun and Lake? Seems like there are some houses that are not visible in Sun and Lake that can do whatever they want.
Well, it's my understanding, it's my understanding that there's only a few HOAs, I think it's the Preserve, I think it's Manor Hill, I think it's Deer Run. I think those are the only three associations, or HOAs, which are homeowners associations, that as Mr. Schumacher said, their regulations will trump the district's regulations if they are stricter. So I didn't think HOAs at all had anything to do with property in Sun and Lake that is not part of an HOA. Read the question back to me, I apologize.
Are the HOA rules applicable to all areas of Sun and Lake?
The answer would be, a simple answer would be no. That's the simple answer. HOAs are controlling only their association, Manor Hill, Preserve, and Magnolia, thank you.
Deer Run State.
Thank you, Mr. Camp. Mr. Branson?
I think that the HOAs are largely a function of deed restriction. The deed restrictions, communities have them, they all, regardless of how enforced they're. I have two properties in Sun Lake, I have no HOA or deed restrictions, or the now, and the last property. So if my neighbor wants to put up a shed or a fountain hut or whatever, there's little nothing I can do about it. That's just a fact of life. You should know that before you buy a property.
Thank you, Mr. Branson. That is all the questions that have been submitted to me in writing, so now I would like to open the floor up to the public to ask questions.
A woman called him over to the side. Well, no, no, no. We'll put it right here, we don't care. So if anybody has any questions they would like to come forward and ask, now's the time to do that. Everybody ask their questions, Dan.
Come on, Sharon. We've had the press report. Years past, I think I'm the oldest, here in nineteen eighty.
Into the mic.
Nineteen eighty-seven, anybody from the? Well, I've been coming to these meetings for about thirty years, and nothing's changed. Yes, with it, but all of my supervisor friends are dead, are dead, in the old room, you know? Fellas do a great job, and I appreciate it. But we talk about the past, the present, and the future. Future's number one, fire. Future's number one. We've got to get more people in here. Number two, we've got to maintain what we have, that's number two. And the past is past. So all I've got to say is, congratulations, I'm doing a great job. I'm Romney's third base heading home. And why are you laughing? Nobody else has got the guts to stand up here and talk, not in that area, but whatever, whatever. I sound like, I sound like fighting. So anyway, congratulations, and somebody had to say something. Past, present, future.
Thank you, Wayne.
It is Wally Vernon, Emmanuel Circle, and we have one question, follow preview. Do you know who checks or inspects Earl's work?
Who inspects Earl's work?
Mike. Mike who?
Mike.
He checks his work and approves.
His boss, he is helping. Brian. Brian, right, and just the regional, who I could bless, who is Brian, I can't remember Brian.
Rhodes.
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 Rhodes?
Brian Rhodes. Brian Rhodes. So how often would he come to hole number fourteen and check the work that he's doing? Does he approve?
I put an answer back.
Thank you.
You got that fourteen on turf?
Absolutely. And this one's a resident. I wonder why Sun and Lake hasn't made homeowners' station, it covers the whole area. Because as you want to grow, you can have some areas that aren't going to be so good. And if you have the whole complex under the same rules, people come in, they buy a house, they'll know fitness, but let you be. They're not going to end up with a neighbor who comes in and says, you don't want to put a wall around my house, have five dollars back, bargain back there.
And I miss that. I think what we've run into in the past, that was, some of these HOAs were started after local vote. Those people ended up being exempt, and obviously, you're the deed restriction. You can't go and put us on a roadmap, there are people who are already there, it's called grandfather.
Okay, but can you pull one in effective from this day on, those grandfather people? Grandfather in, because most of them are taking good care of the property.
I suppose we've never made anything, I mean, it would be a difficult thing to do, I'm saying it wrong.
Well, I just see some of these fences going up long on the golf course.
And I agree, I'm.
Honestly, I do.
I agree.
This is Amy Ryan. I've heard you save money, that somebody had put money behind, save some money, effective for January, if our Canadian friends and Northerners don't come back. Are we going to be able, is the golf course going to be able to survive if we don't have our northern folks come to see us?
I can tell you, we did a, I had Mike come up with some numbers for us, if the Canadians nobody shows, and we go up in the void, for example, it's, it would be a loss of income based on last year's memberships of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Most of the fans like to watch here at the restaurant, obviously, but yeah, I mean, we're hoping five hundred thousand, so I don't believe there's going to be an issue of having to, closing the cost or anything like that.
Will it be raising any of the fees for us residents who are here in the long term to compensate for the loss of income without?
Well, I'd rather not.
Is that what we're, is that being entertained at all?
I'm sorry?
Is that being entertained at all? Did you see that out in the community, that prices have increased greatly because we don't have the traffic that we used to have? And I was just wondering, is that going to translate ever to a non-golf course?
So then, we did take a price increase on the golf courses here, I mean, we were five percent.
Yeah.
So if there wasn't, there was price, but to look at doing anything further, I think it's premature. I mean, if we really ran into a serious problem, we didn't have any money, we would probably entertain, but I don't think it's going to come to that.
This is like, you know, but our outside play is up because we have less people here. So based on the season, the time of year, we're doing pretty well. I talk to people out there from Tampa who come here to play these courses because they feel like they're as good as they can find for the price. So the fact that we lose our native, that's a risk, doesn't necessarily mean we're going to lose all of the revenue, because hopefully, we'll replace it with outside sales. If in the most part, that generates you a dollar for the round. There is hope.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm Halle Delagarde, I'm a homeowner, homeowner. I just had a couple drinks, but I do want to thank, I do want to thank the board for this last year. We have had so many things that have happened in our little community with that, that has benefited us. We had a hog problem, they stepped up, they put a fence that prevented the hogs from getting back into our area. You have no idea how that's helped us with our properties, because you can't sell anything or do anything if everything's dug up and looks like that. So I want to start off with that. I appreciate all of you with your comments and look forward to a successful year. And that's helped having this meeting. I think that we have been able to make some decisions based on these comments, so we appreciate everything that you have done for us. Thank you.
How far do you prefer you bring it on without fence? I think, oh, is that around, is that a lot of light?
Yeah.
And there's probably forty properties that have been, so. That was a great question, Al, for, well, um.
Bill, I'm President, glad to see all these people here. I wish they would show up on a district meeting, it would be really helpful, a lot of people do. I appreciate it. I appreciate all the work that these guys do, the candidates and the people who are elected. The only thing that I can say, that I have spent hours and hours in there, making gracious with everybody for historical reasons, but the micromanaging, we brought that up, not a new word, we brought that up, and I tell you what, we discussed one time about, shall the rake be in the trap or out of the trap? Now, that was a big deal. I said, it's not a big deal, we just spent forty-five minutes on invaluable time. So I appreciate if you guys have kind of cut down the micromanaging, leave it, whether it's two golf carts or one golf cart, leave it up to management on the lower level, and go ahead and do the most important things, like taking care of speeding and other problems that we have up here. I appreciate you guys being up here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the subjects? Okay, I'd like to move on to the candidate closing statements. I'll start with Mr. Brooks, since I start with Mr. Branson on the head of the team. So, Mr. Brooks?
Well, I'd like to thank you all for coming. It really is, it's a pleasure to have an opportunity to have this type of conversation versus some of the conversations we have at our board meetings. So this truly is, it's truly appreciated, I'm sure, my all three of us, actually all of us, including the other guys that are sitting here, you like, who are also supervisors. If you do really like me, I'm going to tell you two things that I'm going to try and do for you. I'm going to try and continue to always have a balanced budget. Easier said than done, you haven't seen us spend money, but I am going to continue to try and do that. I am going to try to push for the infrastructure, continue to push that, continue to allocate that to the two hundred, at least five hundred thousand dollars a year, unless I'm told by our leaders that we have more of a serious problem than I think we have. I think five hundred thousand or plus of fifteen or twenty years should be enough to do it. I'm going to try to stress the board the importance of the five-year capital plan. We haven't spent that much time on that tonight. But a five-year capital plan truly gives you an indication of the money that you're going to need to accomplish what you want to accomplish over a five-year period. I mean, it's set to drop. If the plan is not that good, you have no clue what you're doing. So I think it's critically important, I'm a big supporter of the five-year plan. In fact, Mr. Hoteling will tell you that maybe you should be a ten-year plan, which I agree with, but I think first you have to get to five years, and then he's talking about getting to ten years. I am going to continue to help and develop a plan to improve the recreational memories that we have. I think that's critically, critically important. Not saying that all the things that I mentioned before have to be addressed, but I think it's important that we do continue to improve what we offer other than the golf. The biggest challenge I think we have is the relationship and the communication between the board supervisors, the district, and the residents of Sun Lake. That really, really bothers me. It's great to see you guys here, but we have a board meeting, we have seven or eight people, we have a lot of people. And then people don't understand what's going on, they find out at the last minute, and they come to us and they say, how could you possibly do this? What were you thinking? And we may have been discussing it for three, four months. So our communication with you guys is horrible, and I blame the district and the board owners. I can't blame you guys, because it can only do with what you receive, and I'm going to try to stress to our district that we improve the communication. Last thing, I'll close with this, I represent all of you guys, and any decisions that I make, any votes that I take, any conversations that I have, I try and do so with you guys in mind, since I do represent. I try and do so with you guys in mind since I do represent you. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks and Mr. Branson.
I really believe Ray must have been pretty rough. I covered about 90% of what I was going to say, so. And that's an unfortunate thing. So I talked about the beautification plans and things of that nature. I totally agree. I believe in five-year budgets or plans, I should say. And I also heard over the previous, my experience on the board that people said, no, we only go one to two years. We don't have to worry about three to five. Well, that wasn't the way I used to fly when I was in business. It was always a five-year plan or greater. It is a guideline, okay? So I have to agree with them on that. Like I was saying, I think the beautification plans, I'm looking at individual programs. Now, since you took everyone from me, name recognition for Sunland Lake. But, you know, the golf operation, and we need to work with the golf operation. And I'm not quite sure how this will all take place. I have some ideas. And we're also in the process of, there's an RFP out. If you people aren't familiar with what we're doing or what they're doing, there's an RFP out to look for potentially, and I say potentially, another management company to try to get an idea or feel or they might do differently than the existing operations here, the Billy Casper operation, or I guess it's Buffalo Communications now. But I also caution everybody to say, what you think is, the grass is always greener on the other side. We have a specific area that I believe is a little bit of an issue with the Casper organization. So it's not over the course, although some people might disagree with me. It's here. And so my approach would be to get something going here once again. Everybody on the existing board has mentioned it. More importantly, I am looking at fiscal conservative values here. When somebody comes up and they mentioned it earlier, and I know this is the one closest thing, but I have to get it out. When we were in talks, or when they were in talks with the hustle up the street, I don't have anything about donations. No problem. Some ideas we tossed around, a $200,000 sponsorship donation. Actually, one board member recommended $1 million. We're at $12 million invited community. So why these ideas start to get rolling, I don't know. But it's all part of the board. And I've been on the boards before and I know how some of that happens. I don't know how all of it happens. So we've got to reel in some of this spending. Now, and one of the things that Joe said, and I was on the board at the time with Joe, one of the things that Joe said in all ballot, you know, the kitchen, the safety and all of these things, what started out to be, after we had all of the consultants come in, was going to be around $1 million and one. Then the board got together and we said, no, we're going to cap it. I said this in my earlier statements, we're going to cap at $650,000. And guess what? They had $950,000 in the budget. I said, no, we can't do that. They said, we're going to pass the budget with $950,000. I said, no, you can't pass the budget with $950,000. If you have it in there, you'll spend it. And ultimately, and so I think it was $1 million and three. Somebody said $2 million. I don't know where that came from. I'm getting, I'm getting the, okay. So let me just say to you that I worked a lot of hours when I was on the board in the past. I spent 25 to 30 hours a week researching things, meeting with people, going out to sites and I was saying, these guys, don't do it. And you have board members out there, don't do it. But I did put a tremendous amount of time. I also took a tremendous amount of calls from the people in the community. The communication between the community and my staff was stellar. And I pride myself on that. People would say to me, well, I don't get any calls. And I said, the reason you don't get calls is you're probably not responding to their requests. And the more you respond to somebody's request, the more you're going to get calls. It's kind of like Michael in back. Michael does everything, everything. At a board meeting, somebody said, somebody said, well, who do you call if you have a problem?
Mike.
Exactly. Actually, who said it, I believe. Didn't you say? You didn't say that. Somebody said, call Mike.
No, I said Mike.
You know, he does an incredible job. I sat with him a couple, two months ago before I, before I ended up. This, I finished. I sat with Michael two months ago before I put my name even in this. I sat with him in Bunkfield. And I said, what can we do better in this community to make your job easier, to make Bunkfield's job easier, and at the same time, being able to keep up with the COVID action? So those are the types of things I'm going to do. I'm not looking at fine sky 10 years out, okay? I'm looking immediately to get things rolling here. And I would appreciate it if people, if they were willing, for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cam. Mr. Branson?
Thank you for coming like this in my mind. As I say, you leave it as good or bad as you found it. Kitchen project wasn't over. It hasn't panned out, far less virus-related, but we solved the problem that I initially constructed us all. We spent more money than I intended to see spent. On the other side, I've had family here in the last 12 weeks. I bring them here for dinner and they think it's the most wonderful place in the world. But I've made it my business if someone contacted me with a question to get them a response. I've written, heard people in the backyard when they felt money wasn't adequate. I met with people. I try to follow up and get answers. I am budget conscious. I spent 30 years of my life contracting and negotiating. And I intend to build a lot more of that. So if I'm successful in getting reelected, I know probably there will be a lot of votes or ratings that we didn't have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I would like to mention that the minutes for this meeting will be available on the district's website here after completed. So I appreciate every, each and every one of you for attending.
We certainly appreciate our attendance tonight. And as the cabinet has said, we would love to have this kind of turnout for our board meetings. And if the timing of the board meeting, which has traditionally been on a Friday morning, that's not the best time to meet. If you'd rather have evening meetings in order to, let us know. We can, we can make adjustments. We would love to have this kind of presentation in the working meetings for you. Thank you for that. We certainly turn the meeting.